Yeah. Okay, alright. We're gonna call to order the special call meeting of the Effingham County Board of Commissioners this July 12th at 5 o'clock. Have roll call. I don't need, do I have a pen, somebody?
I do not have a pen. Here, sir.
Thank you, sir. Came ill-equipped. Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette.
Here.
Mr. Deloach.
Here.
Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
And Mr. Corbett is here. Mr. Loper, and he is absent. With that, if you all stand for the invocation, pledge allegiance to the flag. Father, we thank you so much for safe travels today. We thank you for these gentlemen around this table and for the wisdom they bring. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, and we pray that tonight you would give us your wisdom and your direction, and we make decisions that are right and pleasing to you. And we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the consideration to approve the agenda. You have it before you, do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Deloach second, Mr. Burdette to...
Mr. Chairman, I need to make an amendment to that agenda.
Okay.
I need to add the approval of a right-to-entry agreement with Barring County.
Alright, item number six will be a right-to-entry agreement. Right-to-entry agreement. So we have six items on our agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the noted changes for item number six.
Second. Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette for the agenda with the noted addition of item six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, we pass this unanimously. I don't see any general public here tonight, so I guess we can skip that, because there's none here. Correspondence is in the website and clerk's office. Hope anyone who is listening, if we're being broadcast tonight, I don't know if we are, hopefully you had those documents and you're ready to, I guess, consider as we consider these items tonight. With that, we're gonna have new business, but before we have new business, I'm gonna call for a motion to go into executive session, discuss pending litigation, personnel, and purchase of property.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, we are in executive session.
All right, I need a motion to go back into regular session.
Pro moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second, Mr. Deloach to go back in regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, no. He no knows we are in regular session. And a new business, the first item is second reading from the last meeting, so consideration to approve, I'm sorry, the first reading.
That's right.
Consideration to approve the first reading to amend part two of section C, article three, section three dash four buffers of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. Is this the first reading? I thought y'all did that at the last meeting. Was there not already a meeting? This is the first time, is this the first time we're amending the text?
Um, first reading?
Yeah, is this the first reading of amendment?
It is first reading. They had the, um, they had the public hearing at a...
Planning board.
Planning board.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking of. All right, so consideration to approve the first reading to amend part two, section C, article three, section three and four buffers of Effingham County Code of Ordinances. Jim, you know, this is so that we can allow, um, Brian Kennedy to continue construction in the buffers without any restrictions. We've already conferred that to them by multiple media's email, phone calls. And told them the buffers, we were sure we had the board's approval. You could go ahead and work, but they didn't want to work without it. So we are officially making that first reading tonight. Do you have a motion?
And well, just, just to be clear, because this is an ordinance change and it is going to change everything along the interstates, correct?
That's correct.
That's, I just wanted to, you know, this is not specific to just any one particular issue.
Absolutely. So do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second, Mr. Kiefer to approve this first reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. He no knows it passes unanimously. All right, now we get into some agreements that we are trying to put together and...
Would you have to do a second reading?
Huh? There's no second reading on here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not on the agenda, so can we do it?
It is not on the agenda.
It's not on, okay.
Is there any reason, Lee, we could not add that to an agenda item, do a second reading?
I would go and, yeah, make a motion to add it to the agenda, second reading, since there are no changes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we add item number seven.
Well, we can call this one A if you like.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we add, uh, number one A to new business, which will allow us to have the second reading to amend part two, appendix C, article three, section three, four, or three dash four buffers of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Look, we have a motion to amend the agenda to add, agenda to add the second reading. Second by Mr. Burdette. Okay, a motion to second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. He no knows it passes unanimously. And we're noting that attorney said since we did, had no additions or changes or corrections to the first reading we could...
And it was a unanimous?
It was unanimous, also we could add the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
We just did. Oh, that was agenda, I'm sorry. Got a motion to approve second reading? All right. Second by Mr. Burdette, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no.
I thought we just approved, just to add it to the agenda.
You're right, you're right.
Yeah, okay.
Very good. All right, so we've, we've got item one A out of the way. We're going to number two, this is an agreement. And Tim, let's give a brief, just because we're in a public meeting now, why we're doing what we're doing tonight.
So I'll, I'll do all of the agreements, you want me to do the description of all the agreements and so therefore we can just kind of go through them one at a time?
So the public knows why we're doing these agreements tonight, why we're having this called meeting.
Okay.
And then if we have any comments from the board, we'll make that, and then we'll take our vote.
So, uh, uh, in order to serve the Hyundai plant, uh, there is a forest main that is going through Effingham County, um, that will convey sewer from the Hyundai plant to, through Effingham to Savannah. Uh, and so, uh, in order to do that, um, first of all, Effingham County does own two parcels of land, uh, that the forest main would go through. Um, so for those two parcels of land, we would have to vote on an easement, uh, to allow that to take place. Uh, the second thing, uh, the second item is that anytime a government operates outside of their borders, uh, ex-territorially, they have to, um, uh, they have to sign an agreement with the, uh, that particular governmental entity, uh, for the delivery of service, uh, and any sort of conditions for providing those, um, services, uh, within the county, considering that those, um, that, that property is not going to be taxable. Uh, and so, uh, there has to be an agreement, an intergovernmental agreement between Effingham County and Bryan County, uh, for, uh, running and operating, uh, and constructing, uh, that forest main through Effingham County. Uh, the third item, uh, is, um, during the discussions very early on, matter of fact, prior to Hyundai landing here, there was, um, a discussion to provide, um, capacity in that. Uh, the third item, uh, is, um, during the discussions very early on, matter of fact, prior to Hyundai landing here, there was, um, a discussion to provide, um, capacity in that, um, force main. Uh, so that, uh, when, uh, uh, F, when Bryan County, uh, becomes operational on their wastewater treatment plant, um, the direction of that force main will reverse, and wastewater will be sent to, uh, Bryan County from Savannah. That Effingham County, uh, could have some, uh, capacity, access in that line in the, and the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, and so this, uh, the third agreement is the, um, sewer capacity agreement, um, the terms of how much, when, uh, and the cost, uh, that, by Effingham County will have to pay for that. Uh, and then the last agreement, um, uh, if, uh, there are some terms in the agreement that we are passing tonight, that Bryan County, um, does not agree with, and we have to go to negotiations, um, is a right-to-enter agreement on the properties that Effingham County owns, that they were putting the force main through. Those, uh, this would allow them to, uh, construct the force main, uh, in the Effingham County-owned properties, uh, but it would not, uh, but it specifically states that they cannot put it into operation, um, until, uh, the, uh, IGA and the other agreements are signed. So, uh, essentially those are the, technically there's, um, uh, there's five agreements, because there's two easements, and there's two separate pieces of property, uh, but those, that's a list of all the agreements that we're approving and why.
Very good. I want to add just that the IGA that we're approving tonight, we had requested, uh, Bryan County to provide us an IGA probably six months ago. We've been talking about capacity agreements long before that, and have not been able to get any discussion or traction on those things. So here we are, as the project began construction, just to make sure everybody understands that they began construction without, through Effingham County, without a land disturbance application, uh, being filed. And so we ended up having to issue a stop work order to protect, uh, land disturbance in our permitting process. We quickly resolved that with them. And our only request is that they get a plan together with us to establish an IGA, a capacity agreement, um, and the easements. Uh, and once we had that worked out, they could begin work. So we have worked diligently to put together an IGA tonight, as you've expressed, um, a capacity agreement, and an easement agreement, and an access agreement, so that they can, um, move forward their construction.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add to, to the record that I personally greatly appreciate all of your time. Tim, county manager, thank you for all of your time. Phil, uh, our vice chairman, thank you for your time, and all of these extra meetings that we've had to have to come to this point, to hopefully clarify these IGAs, so we can proceed with this project and be a team player and keep things rolling.
Yep.
Thank you for all of y'all's time.
Well, I appreciate it. I did come back early from Florida today. I was going to stay till Saturday.
Yeah, and I do want to point out, particularly with the, uh, right-to-entry agreement, that, that, that we recognize the, it's not even regional importance, it's statewide importance with the, um, support of the legislature and the governor's office in getting this project going, that, that we're, we're eager to get this behind us ASAP.
Yep. And I hope that Bryan County and their board will recognize that we have worked hard and are trying to be a team player with our four county region and our governor. We're doing everything we can to, to help them move this along, so hopefully, um, this will resolve a lot. That's what we're here to do tonight, give, give them these agreements that will give them a level of comfort they've been asking for, okay? So with that, I'm going to read the first one and see if there's a way we need, we want these agreements to be connected, even though they're independent of each one. We want to understand that this board is approving, understanding that all these agreements, um, must be, uh, signed or approved simultaneously when the actual signing comes.
All follow each other, they all tie.
They tie, tie together. So the first item, uh...
So does that matter, I mean, does it matter how we make the motion? We still just approve it, it's just, you'll, you'll, we'll have the language in each one that states that, or do we need to put that in each motion, or?
Yeah, I was going to get Lee to help me with that.
Yeah, I mean, you may want to join them together, because they're all going to be contingent on each other. So I would do maybe one motion to approve items two, three, four, and five.
All right.
And those are contingent upon, you know, Bryan County signing those.
All right, I like that. So attorneys recommend we make, have, receive a motion, and I'll read all items, for, that we have one motion to approve items two, three, four, and five, tying them together, um, as one agreement.
And six.
Huh?
You want to tie sixty, or is that separate?
Oh, the, um, oh, you're right, that is separate. You're, you're correct.
That entry is, yeah.
Yeah, you're, that's separate.
So I'm, I'm going to read this out, then I'm going to call for a motion, uh, of two, three, four, and five, uh, being approved together for one signing. So item number two on the agenda is consideration to approve an intergover, intergovernmental agreement by and between Effingham County and Bryan County related to the I-16 water and sewer project. Item three is a consideration to approve an intergovernmental agreement for sewer services between Effingham County and Bryan County related to the I-16 regional sewer improvements, project I-16 main improvements. Item number four is consideration to approve a permanent easement between Effingham County and Bryan County related to a pump station and rights for the construction and maintenance of a project identified as the I-16 regional sewer project, project, uh, I-16 main improvements. And item number five is consideration to approve a permanent easement between Effingham County and Bryan County related to sewer lines and rights for the construction and maintenance of a project identified as the I-16 regional sewer improvements project, uh, I-16 main force, uh, main force main improvements. So do I have a motion to approve all these agreements? So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach to approve these agreements as read.
Do we need to, I mean, do we need to add anything in there that they need to be signed all at one time, or do we need to go?
All, what was more contingent on each other?
Yeah, the, these items, two, three, four, and five, you know, the approval will be subject to the approval of a Bryan County to sign all of these documents at the same time.
All right, I'm going to go to, uh, Mr. Burdette. You add to your motion that this approval is contingent upon Bryan County signing these simultaneously with the chairman of the Board of Commission of Effingham County.
So moved. And I'll second.
Yeah, that's the second. All right, so now we have our motion, our second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows the agreements are approved. And then we have number six is the right-to-entry agreement. I think there's any, any discussion, other than that allows them, as Tim said earlier, to begin construction within the easement, but they cannot become operational until the other agreements are approved. The motion to approve item six.
Make a motion to approve, um, item number six as approved, as, as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach for item six as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. All right, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to adjourn this meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows we adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen, for make, coming, making this effort to come. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.